Yeah, let's call the meeting to order. Some seven oh.
Kurt Coby. Irving Ringer.
Yeah.
David King.
President.
He's not here. Daniel Lee.
Yeah.
Martin and Tricia Tanner are not here.
Maybe coming late to.
There's no movement in the old business neither on over here.
Absolutely.
Guys, I couldn't remember if I sent you the meeting minutes from the last meeting, so I printed them out there for the agenda. You guys need a minute to take a look at them? It was a long one. It took me a minute to do the meeting.
You all want to kind of took some out of order there. I was going to let you address the.
I've printed the visitor's sign in sheet out. You guys will all find it.
So as we approve the minutes, we'll give the visitors a chance to address the board. Any comments on the minutes? Corrections? Okay. Not any discussion on the on the minutes? Your motion to approve the minutes?
I want to make a motion to approve the votes.
Second.
I have two seconds before we roll on. Okay.
All favor? Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Uh, so we uh, three visitors um, and yes, what I'll do is uh, this is a special meeting. I I assume you know that. Okay, so a special meeting is dedicated to a specific subject. In this case, it's solar installations. Okay, so we have to address that by the uh, the rules and regulations of the sun sunshine law in Ohio. Their meetings are scheduled differently. So that's the subject. So um, that being said, I think we can hear whatever visitors say. And uh, so visitors will have three minutes to address the board if uh, you know, if the board decides to hear or on that subject, we can discuss it in old business if it applies old business or new business. So, so Mr. Lurker, you were here first.
Well, I'm basically here as the president of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And uh, I saw your one app year one proposed zoning resolution stance, their solar panels. I have no objection to what was written there. And then the of interest to me on the BCA is if these are only going to be the small size panels arms or solar panels under fifty megawatt. So um, and then I understand part of that zoning post standards that they would come before the BCA on a conditional use. And then there uh, I would be applying us our standards under public safety and health. So my concern is when they come before the board, whether they're sighted on property that is uh, not ag prime, but actually hydro soils. Because uh, um, we we uh, it had a hydrogeologic report done when we were responding to a county cited landfill. And in that report, about seventy percent of the town owned incorporated portion of the township is actually hydro soil. And in that case, when you have the farm was operating on hydro soil. And when they stop farming it, it becomes an industrial use or residential use. And once the aquatic plants emerge off those hydro soils, it reverts back to wetland. So any applicant that comes forward to the BCA, I would have to remind them that they have the potential of having to comply with wetland conditions, regulations. Both the state and the federal government have regulation regarding wetlands. So at that point, I'll put it in during the hearing, the BCA. I don't think you need to add anything to your zoning standards on that case.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
That's something we've discussed. And I'll I'll talk with Fred afterwards. The other issue is that in that hydro in that hydro geological board, uh, most of the township is a recharge zone for two well field. That's what this plate is. This is from the board. Uh, this is the boundary of uh, this German township. This is county line road. This is Butler County down here. This is seven twenty five. What she said in the report, and this is the well field for German town. Okay, this is the well field for Graddick. So all these hydro soils that are in the township absorb rainfall, they recharge. And that's what she's saying here. This is a recharge zone. Both well fields. So I'm gonna give that information to the trustees because they may apply for a exemption to county commissioners for the large scale solar panels. So that's where that'd be more of interest to them on that. Those are the only two.
Okay.
What's that I didn't want to make?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Please, Mark Cross is looking into.
What's that?
Mark Cross is looking into getting an exemption, you know, possibility of it. Okay, I was gonna say he would.
Do you have a CD? Peter?
Yeah.
All that information I got on CD.
Why don't you care to address?
I have nothing to add. Don't come.
I'm just just here with. Cheers. Okay. Well, thank you for joining us because we don't often get visitors. Um, but we do appreciate any input from the community. That's just, you know, this group of members. And we're doing our best to make decisions that are for both represent the values of property owners as well as reflect the values of the community. It's a balance that we have to strike. So this this is a solar farms, solar installations. I think that's a lot of attention. Um, so let's see, where are we? Uh, old business. Prove the minutes. Should we move to new business then, Dan?
Any old business we have is thirty minutes though.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I guess we'll we'll just because we really didn't get in too much to this. Last time we decided on all this one look at it. So let's move to uh, new business unless there's anything else. Um, so under new business, we've got the small solar regulations. You all have a copy that John printed out there. Okay. So uh, Dan went through and um, made some edits that would help us based upon our resolution um, to focus what we have to do to shape it for the for German township. You know, for instance, uh, you know, represent the districts that we have in our resolution. Uh, site that up memory county is involved with this. And you want to describe what your thoughts were?
Everyone has a copy that way.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not necessarily highlight.
Yeah, I noticed that. I I'd um, you can sort of see it in your copy. Look, I can point out the parts that I added to. Um, I put them in red on my copy, but didn't show up in the black and white that I didn't think about making that more clear. So anyway, I'll tell you where it is. And I assume we we looked at this last time. So you probably have seen the document as it was before. It was from the Ohio Township Association. That's what this is based on. They gave us a template. So fortunately, everything we can just add, we're supposed to modify it for our particular township. So the parts that I've added are that under the first well, the first paragraph just tells the states, actually it's not about small solar. If it's always the first part, just talks about the distinction between if it's over a fifty megawatt that goes to the Ohio powered sighting board. So it's out of our hands in that case. So this is this document, second paragraph is what I added. It's just about this small source facility. So I just kind of recapped what that is. And um, and I basically said that it um, it should be a conditional use in the district which is cited. Uh, and that it's going to be considered an accessory of use. That's that's the part that was added in that section. The definitions are straight pickup from what they um, what they provided. It's basically for information ground mounted solar energy systems, integrated solar energy systems, rooftop at solar energy systems, small solar facility, solar energy and solar energy system. So it's really quite elementary as far as this definition is what they uh, if somebody gets confused about which ones or which. Most of this document is about ground uh, based ground mounted solar energy systems. So uh, the conditional uses, and again, this follows a format they had that the Ohio Township Association used. So I just followed that pretty much the same in format. I added each of those conditional uses of the different for the integrated solar energy systems and rooftop and ground mounted and all other solar facilities. Just included the districts in which they apply. I didn't include every single little division like, you know, the office one, two and all that. I just it's agriculture, residential office, business industrial and planned industrial. And what I did was just, I figured there's since the conditional uses, I saw no reason to exclude any of the uh, any of the districts for consideration. It's all going to go to the BCA to actually just decide a case by case basis, which ones that will be applicable to. So that's the first page. That's quick going through there. The general requirements then. I was not quite quite sure first why they had separated them, general requirements versus actual conditional use criteria. So but I think it helps to have it in those general requirements. It's broken up into some general things that might apply to any of those. Specifically or some specifically. So on the coverage area for the integrated ones, this again, I don't think we'll be seeing much of this. It's not what is it's already in use. People as we know, have already been putting rooftop solar energy systems in. We decided the percentage, the seventy five percent that I chose there is basically kind of an industry average. That's based on just what you can put on a roof. So that's not a figure that just came out of thin air. It's actually what what people are selling those systems. Tell people you can put on your roof about seventy five percent of the of the structure, either the roof or the wall structure. So then I also added this about the furthermore, the coverage must comply with requirements that the international building code, international power code, national electrical code, and American society of civil engineers. I also was not a thin air. A lot of these companies that sell those for the residential use, they where she have to follow those requirements as well. So I thought that should be spelled out here. So people realize that upfront. The ground mounted solar systems, energy systems. The only thing that was added here, and this again, is specific to our township, which is so highly agricultural. Uh, and I think some of the main, some of the main concerns we had in the meetings and the trustees have had in their meetings concern the effect on prime agricultural soil. The only thing I added there at the end of that coverage about how much can be used, uh, we did put, I I included the eight feet that the ground mounted energy system should not exceed eight feet because from what I could see from what they're selling, most of the commercial and the residential systems are under seven feet. Uh, fifty percent, that's pretty much what we have in other parts of the of the zoning about area for things like that, fifty percent of the total aggregate, aggregate fifty percent. Uh, the last line, the removal of prime agricultural soil shall be limited to five acres in total for the purpose of installing any building components or facility intended for an agricultural purpose. So that again is to, as we heard from different people, I guess from the trustees meeting, that once this land is for the use of this ground mounted solar systems, once the land is scraped off with the top, so it's gone effectively for any use of agricultural purposes. That was there. The other things were the same visual buffer, lighting, noise, all that. That backs that backs getting more in detail on the other next page. Uh, the maintenance, um, one thing we thought on the maintenance, we've been hearing a lot of issues about places and down around Cincinnati, other several counties down there. They've had real disasters with this. They thought it was going to be a great, a great success for avoiding cost. And it turned out there was a lot of problems that people aren't weren't weren't doing it as it was intended or as it was promised. So it seems like, and they had no recourse at this point. So what we have in here, performance surety bond shall be required for any small solar facility to ensure maintenance of all components. Removal of all related components when the facility ceases transmission of electricity for thirty consecutive days. And that's what, that's what the the Ohio Township Association has that the thirty days that comes from their um, from their write up. So see, we added Montgomery County down there in the last line on that page, just to make more specific. Nothing changes with advertising. It's just what the Ohio Township people put in there, other restrictions. Um, the only thing here was again, because of the issues that we understand happening with these leased systems is that they have no control. They also can walk away if they go bankrupt, which is a big concern. These companies may go bankrupt and then they're just going to walk away. So the statement under other restrictions says, any solar energy system in an agriculture or residential district must be owned, not leased by the land over where the landowner where the solar energy system will reside. A small solar facility shall not be installed in the residential district or within one hundred feet of any lie in the residential district. In addition, a small solar facility shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations. Again, that's just to um, avoid the asset body of of someone leasing this out, their land out, and then the company going bankrupt and walking away and nobody's responsible for cleanup or or taking care of it. Under criteria for conditional uses, it gets more specific. Only thing I really added here in this first section was that section under where it says drainage. We have first sections were just um, conditional saying it's just conditional permitted use. Uh, the the road use is maintenance agreement, standard. The part that was added was drainage. There's drainage. A survey shall be required by the German Township Board of Zoning Appeals as part of the approval process to ensure that no facility will be constructed. It changes the flow of current streams or channels or the functioning of drainage systems, which may negatively impact any downstream properties. Uh, the next paragraph is again, safety services is pretty standard about having emergency access to property location. Pretty much again, that's what it was saying where you can put them, which is sort of follows our other standards for where you can put accessory use items in in our properties. Height, maximum height, again, eight feet should not exceed eight feet of the small source facility. Offers and setbacks, we, they left the amount, the number of feet open, although it seems pretty standard from what we can see that that they are no part of this small solar facility shall be located within one hundred fifty feet of an existing residential dwelling. No small solar facility will be located within hundred feet of another property line. And no small solar facility shall be located with one hundred feet of a public right of way or shared juice driveway. Some of that's taken care of because we don't uh, we don't have, it would not happen. The corner lots have different provisions as far as the same, almost the same sort of front, front facing um, application. Visual buffer, the only thing added here, they had pretty good um, pretty good representation of what be good for a visual buffer. The only thing that was added here, I added all visual buffers shall meet specified height and setback requirements at the time of installation and be maintained over the life of the facility. This is a response to something situations happened down in Cincinnati where where they had promised they would do this, but they planted little plants and it's going to take years for them to come up to the height. So it basically is not doing that. So that's why it says so they have light and setback requirements at the time of installation and maintain over the life of the facility. Flare has not surprising lighting. I I'm surprised even had some of these light things and noise additions that got them in there. Fencing, again, fencing is pretty much standard for anything that you have. There's a saying it should be harmonious with compatible with the surrounding properties and uses. I added um, because the other thing that I heard in the in the ones down in Cincinnati was that I didn't realize this, but these facilities, certain voltages require barbed wire fences and locked access to them. And a lot of people down there were quite upset with the video. It looks it looked like they were living in a prison.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all these barbed wire fences. So and I looked up to find, I found out what that was. It's part of that's NEC requirements, the code requirement. It's NEC one ten point thirty one. So I just put in here, if fencing includes barbed wire to meet NEC requirements for high voltage installation, it's EG NEC one ten point thirty one. A visual buffer of natural vegetation and planning is equal to the height of the fencing at a minimum must be maintained. No fencing shall be greater than eight feet in height. And then the rest I'm just tells what's required for the certificate of compliance. The various things from included in engineering, engineering report. I don't know if that's something you usually get for any kind of you get engineering reports usually on, no, okay, that was, that was the Ohio Township included that as well. So that's it as far as any of the document. Any kind of questions for?
As as I was reading over this and just kind of filling in the blanks here of a template that was given to us and I went through and so far, I'm just kind of checking off what you said or whatever, the stores for zoning districts. I just put all of them, which is basically what you said. The problem I ran into with this whole document here is this can't really be used for small solar farms, which are fifty megawatts and under. And the home installation during property or whatever. And the reason why is because, you know, you put restrictions on here. I actually put a hundred and fifty feet from the right of way for small solar farm because, you know, when you're really thinking about fifty feet is nothing, a hundred feet is a little more, but but I mean, you know, on a a facility like we're talking about, you know, I just, I don't even think, I didn't think a hundred feet was even enough. And so that doesn't apply to, isn't going to apply to a home system. And it's no way to ever get a freestanding home system in with regulations like that. With those setbacks and so forth is what I'm saying. So I, I had a problem with this template being used for home systems and for small solar farm systems. It seems like there needs to be two different two different sets of standards. Otherwise, all home systems are going to be out if they're freestanding. It's still, it's okay for roof mounted and whatever. Yes, but try to plug in a home freestanding system. It's not going to be possible.
But most of those aren't going to be as large as the ones that we were hearing about that were becoming in lease in the ground because nobody doing that like your neighbor. Nobody doing that would need to lease it to company that's wanting to get that. They're they're basically doing it to get solar energy from that landowner. So I understand what you're saying. This is though. I I thought it's strange too, the Ohio Township Association pumped all those things in here because as you see, the heading of it is small solar facilities. I don't think, like example, someone is using for or ground mounted solar panels for their house or they're not going to be, I don't know if that technically would be a small solar facility or just ground panels installed for their house.
Well, see, that's that's that was my hang up on this. We can't use this document for, you know, somebody who wants to put one in their backyard.
Well, I think you could as long as we're not doing, as long as the setbacks are right. I mean, we we don't, remember we had a big discussion about whether that can happen on a corner before. You can't put it in front of your house. That's for any, you can't put a garage or or anything in front of your house. So that knocks that out. That's basically other than the right of way that we're talking about. That's the only thing that's going to affect them. And and I mean, I'm okay if you wanted to make that to a hundred and fifty. I know you're speaking specifically for the larger installations. But I was partly keeping that low for for that individual homeowner who was just going to put another alternative besides roof mounted. So he could put ground mounted systems up if he wanted to.
Now, I drove by those facilities, well, some of them down around Brown County, Claremont County facilities. And I I told you guys about this. I don't know, but they were not near in my estimation, far enough off the road. It was, it was just, it was just awful. It's awful. So
Were they in front of the residence too? Can you tell?
It was, these were large. These were large scale farm. Yeah, large scale operation. I don't, I don't know if it was under the fifty. You know, I kind of calculated it takes at least three hundred, three to four hundred acres to do a fifty megawatt installation. And, you know, we put setbacks in there like we're talking about too, then you know, you're going to even need, you know, would need more acres than that to do something like that.
Something I didn't spell out here, that you start thinking about actually doing this. It's a lot more restrictive than it sounds like in here. As you've got, you've got the barrier buffer, the visual buffer. Uh, and you've got all these require, because of the voltage, require the fence. But then also has some kind of, I don't know, I don't know the particulars exactly, but the fencing, like the barbed wire fencing that's required for higher voltage like NEC I was talking about. Uh, there's going to be setbacks there too. So in other words, the the actual installation is going to be back further than what than what is even specified here. Once they put the fencing up in the visual barrier.
Right. And that's, and that's great. That's what I'm Right. And that's, and that's great. That's what I'm advocating.
Well, I'm, I'm in certainly whatever we want to do.
I called, I called Mike, my neighbor, and his solar array is about 12 feet high. Forty-two feet length.
Are they double stacked? Cause from right, I looked at the, with at least some manufacturer saying where the commercial and residential and looked like all of them were under seven feet. So is that like?
I'm just, I'm just telling you what he told me his.
Sorry, two feet high?
Twelve.
Oh, we did see, I don't know who, who provided that information. Someone, was it Mark Ross? Someone said that Liberty Township was stating 16 feet is maximum.
I don't think it should be that for sure. And, and another thing about the fencing is I, I think they went with taller fences. You know, try to keep the deer from crossing through. Is my, you know, if the vegetation buffer is like on the roadside of the fence, then that's going to come to the fence. The standard, you know, an eight foot fence is enough. We have somewhere, deer jump at 10 and 12 foot. I can done that. Then I don't know.
Wait, visitors, when you do visitor comments, can you state your name and address for me?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, up at the podium there.
Pete Lurker, 6900 Stivers Road, Germantown. I just had a ground mounted system put in on my farm. So one question I have is that that statement about 50 megawatts being six to seven acres.
I don't know, three to 400.
I don't understand that because the system that I just put in is rated at 19 megawatt and it only took up 2400 square feet, 80 by, whatever, by 30.
How tall is it? How, how high is it?
Height is maybe 10 feet on the high end. That's the low end is about three feet. And the point I wanted to make is when those restrictions, 150 setback and 100 from the house and say the side yard, I don't see how you could like want to leave in a five acre residence. And most of our residents in the German Township are on five acre plots.
But it'd be, I mean, right now we use accessory structure.
That's why I'm trying to say that this, this document can't be the same for a residential person who wants to put one in. You know, this, this, all this setback where like the larger scale is not going to work. It's not going to work for somebody who wants to put a home unit in.
That can be, you know, just like I said, there, there are sections like the first part says general requirements. It has, it has, it has a section for ground mounted solar energy system and also has one for rooftop. So I mean, you can, you can, we can pull out different requirements for those, those areas.
But then that, then that's fine. Do we need a different document to do that?
I don't think so, because this, this even at least, again, from Mark Cross, this is not going to be a, this is going to be an addendum, not going to be the first right.
So we only need to really worry about the 50 plus mega, of 250 megawatt on, on what we're doing here then.
Yeah, if we haven't have control, they'll.
Well, I know we don't have any control over large ones, but I mean, that, that three to 400 acres came from a, one of these papers that we had where they were basing, I think you came up basically with the same figure I did.
We were just trying to extrapolate from that, but Mark Cross said that that, that wasn't what, I mean, you've been to the meeting too, right? Some meeting where they said that you can't really put a, a one for one as far as you've got somebody else, you can do somebody, it's going to be somebody acres. It's not, it's not calculated that way. It's going to be different for different applications. So we were trying to figure that out based on the example we had, the example that we had so happened that they gave the number of acres and they told what the megawatts.
Yeah, that's what I'm not going to, that's what I was doing. And I was kind of reverse engineering. And they come up with, and they're talking about 660 acres for 49.
We, we were previously told it takes about one acre to generate wean. See, six, six to eight acres to generate one megawatt. Isn't that what we heard drift? I think that came from Township Association. And that's, that's obviously a rough.
Well, that's because far different from what Pete is saying.
I understand, but that's what we've been given as a.
I, I know. And that's what I was basing, that's what I was basing three to four acres to get a 50 megawatt. It would take that much.
Which is good to have a real life example that way. So we know what you actually have.
The other thing is when they come in to size your residential solar panel system, what they do here through AES Ohio, you can only put in 125% of your annual, and it's kilowatt hours. So like from my property was 36, 36,000 kilowatt hours. He said, I can only go 25% or above that nine more. So 45,000 kilowatt hours. It's the most size I could have. I actually put in a 20 kilowatt. He threw in this megawatt thing. I said, Pete, that isn't good. So I went back and looked at paperwork and it said 19,000 kilowatts. I said, well, 19,000 kilowatts is, is 19 megawatt.
With yours being more recent, are you aware of the distinction between, are people going more for ground mounted versus solar versus rooftop? Is there some kind of reason why one's more advantageous than the other?
Well, in, in my case, my house sits in woods and there's no, all my roof at this point is south shaded. So I had to go ground mounted. Wouldn't not let me put the roof mount on my barn. And my barn had excellent exposure to the south and there was trees that have a separate first panel on the barn and you can't, A E O Ohio said you can only tie it to your residential meter. I couldn't.
So in most cases though, I'm thinking in most cases for residential, most people aren't going to be, have your ideal situation where they have both field that's not shaded and a house that is shaded. I mean, I would think.
You get much thicker solar panels on the ground mount. So I get better capacity off my ground mounted system. And I don't have to worry, you know, like say a asphalt shingle last 25 years, you're going to have to tear everything off. You're going to pay, you're going to pay the tear off on the solar panel, probably about $10,000 just to take solar panels off, plus putting on the new roof. And that, that is one reason why I didn't really want to. I have the land for the ground mount, so.
And I'll, this is just an aside for you. When we had our meeting with the BZA back in January, it's that was an additional meeting. One of the things that we heard your members say is that they were looking for guidance from the zoning commission on these things rather than leaving, you know, so many open questions for you guys to figure out each, in each case. So we're trying to help you narrow the, that guesswork, you know, on each case. So, so that's, that's what we're trying to do here. We, we heard you.
I understand that. That, like I said, what I saw, I had no problems with it. It just helps us and the BZA. Now the, the question there on the, like you were reading off on the egg. So I'll cut to 50%. Yeah. So that.
The, that's for the whole property. Yeah. It says the, yes, some of that may have come from that. See the aggregate 50%, the section that under.
I told them also, panel, ground mounted solar panel permit. This one gives off 10.79 kilowatts, solar ground mounted power generator. It is 44 feet by 11 feet. It's 5'9". But it's only kilowatts. Are you sure yours is megawatts or is it kilowatt?
Kilowatt hour.
Okay, that's not the megawatts.
What you're saying, when you're saying megawatt, you're talking hour, not hour, you're talking hour. It's the amperage times voltage is equal. You say kilowatt hour, different than a kilowatt. It's time that you're using. You pay like a kilowatt hours, like 14 cents. They charge on your bill.
It says that the ground mounted solar, it's under the ground mounted solar energy systems on page two, should not exceed in the aggregate 50% of the area of the lot or tract. Now, we, that was a fill in, but 50% came from, there's another part of the zoning regulations about some other things that we're doing that, that they are allowing 50%.
Yeah. We state somewhere in the resolution that accessory use. You know, barns, whatever, whatever you have, can only take up a certain percentage of the backyard and can only be in the backyard, right?
It was under this, under the article for accessory use, right? That's what it is.
That's the same percent I plugged in into this.
Is it 50%?
Yeah.
Probably because the same thing, right? That's what we have for accessory use. So it makes others, is another accessory use.
My concern was when I read the removal of prime agricultural soil shall be limited to five acres. The BZA is being very, very hard on doing anything with prime soil right now. So are, I mean, as far as a BZA standpoint, are you okay with someone taking five acres and removing that much prime soil?
If that's what they say in the southern resolution, I have to abide by it.
I, I get that, but.
I'm saying.
You don't want March talking about conflict of interest.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. And I understand that, but it's like, we're going to tell someone, you can't split a lot and put a, you can't split this lot to sell this part off because it's prime soil. Someone can't build a house that takes up quarter acre. But we're okay saying you take five acres though and just tear it up.
Oh, you know, that, I put that number in there thinking it was a low number and it's not a low enough number.
And that's just, that's just me. I guess I'm playing devil's advocate, but I'm just trying to say like, are we sure we're okay with?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I put that in there. I mean, I, I mean, I didn't, I thought it might be too restrictive to go under five. I mean, I originally had 10 in there and I cut it down to five. Thinking that is even that too restrictive. I know there were some questions about, we can't get so restrictive that we're obviously just ruling things out without.
We started there, right? We started that. Yeah. Well, then if we worry about, you know, if we turn down a lot split and tell someone they can't build a house because there's prime agricultural soil there, sorry about your luck. But then we're like, oh, solar facilities come in and take up, you know, five acres.
It shouldn't differ, correct? So that, is that, does that happen? Are you saying there are cases where you're?
The BZA has turned down lots splits because of prime agricultural soil.
How much and how much was it being taken out, you know?
My case, it was two acres.
So you weren't allowed to?
The cases where you guys turned down because of prime agricultural soil. Turned down the leach.
Yeah, the leach.
Up on the new road. I don't remember how many acres that was. It was two acres. Yeah. You know, it's true. That's a great point. I guess, you know, I, I understand they're being too restrictive, but there's also.
We started out talking about how it was that permanent. Yeah, just nixnaying it, but then it was a lot of discussion about talking about people. You, you don't want, you, you want to please the people too.
Yeah, they should have. If we tell people, you know, you can't split your lot and have your family build a house on your lot because of prime soil back there. But we're going to let Joe Schmo take five of his 10 acres.
This is very good. I mean, absolutely. That's.
I feel like that was going to make people very unhappy.
So do we have that on the BZA? Is it, is this spelled out now? Did that become the de facto standard of two acres?
There is in the resolution, in the resolution it states, if it's prime agricultural soil, it will not be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been looking through that. I must have.
So that's when I would, you know, when it comes to.
Well, then we should change that. If it says to, if that's what it says in there, I mean, we should be following the resolution.
I can go to the resolution.
Well, that's, that's what it is. And you've been dealing with cases on that. So I assume that's, that's what we should do then.
Fair residence.
Oh, I, I definitely agree. It should be consistent. So we can, we can change that. Two acres.
If we're really looking to restrict.
Well. Yes, we're trying to protect prime agricultural.
Exactly. So I guess in my opinion, if, if you, if we're not going to let people build on prime soils, then we shouldn't be letting solar farms come in on soil either. If we're trying to protect the farmland.
I had a thought and it disappeared.
And then, and that's not, that's not talking about, you know, residential solar. That's different. I, I like the idea of like what we're doing now with residential solar is that we just use it as an accessory. And that seems to be working out just fine.
Here's, here's what I was thinking. No, I don't think any company is going to want to come in and just say, oh, I want solar, you know, I'm going to invest in a solar farm on five acres. That's not going to, that's, yeah, they're looking for, they're looking for big.
But they're also, they're getting a lot of pushback. So you can just say what if, because they're getting a lot of pushback. So they're going to be desperate as far as like business and people and their jobs. So they're going to probably settle for five acres.
There'd be too much infrastructure that has to go into something. Let me just use five acre parks. That's just not going to work. They're, they're wanting, you know, they're going to, they're going to want probably a minimum of, you know, I don't know, 60 to 100 acres before they're even would be interested, in my opinion. So I don't think we have to worry about somebody coming in and destroying five acres to put in a solar farm. Because it's just not going to be the logistics system worked out.
Well, they're saying that the point already is that that's what the restrictions are currently. I somehow, I don't know how I looked that over. It was, I wasn't paying as much attention to residential districts. I was agricultural, so that maybe happened. But if, if it is two, two acres, we, it should be consistent across there. I don't see why it should. Is there any, any agricultural reason why? I mean, it says for agricultural uses to this, not an agricultural use. So is there any non-agricultural use that, that still is, is an important accessory use on those lands that should be, their five acres would be necessary? I mean, and I'm not telling you it's five acres, some of their use, five acres of scraping it down. So there's no more prime agricultural soil.
The only thing, you know, you're not going to have five acre sheater shed.
Or, or a parking lot.
Typically. You know, um, so what, or a five acre greenhouse or anything. Unless Ohio legalized marijuana or something, then you might want to.
Then you get more of those fencing requirements like they, we heard that originally.
But.
Barbed wire and all.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, other than somebody putting in a pond or a small lake or something like that. I don't, I really don't know. Can't think of anything off the top of my head that's going to agricultural, can you Freddie, that's going to, or anything that require you to scrape level off five acres for agriculture?
There's a movement about, okay, greenhouse producing vegetables.
Hyponics.
Yeah, hyperponic, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, like.
The ones I've known about, they last about three to five years and that's the end of, it's too expensive. Production cost, eat them up.
So I can't think of anything. So I can't think of anything that's something, it'd be five acres of. It should be the level.
So should we, I mean, there's two ways we can handle. One, we could just change the two acres and let it go. But we could distinguish between agricultural, residential, say five acres for agricultural and two for.
I don't think it says two acres in there. It says.
That's minimum lot size.
All right. I didn't think I'd seen it about.
Okay.
So it's not, okay. So it's not, that's why it was limited for you as well.
And two acre lot size came from, you need, you basically need two acres to side a house, a well, a leach bed and a replacement leach bed. And that's what we decided on way back then. It was three acres and then we decided, you know, you can do it on two, let's, let's protect the farmland.
I actually wrote that report and it two points. That was based on our year drought.
So with the removal of prime agricultural soil should not, should be limited to five acres in total. So that is, I guess, if I'm looking at it right now, if I'm really thinking about it, that is protecting the farmland because someone can't take a hundred acre farm and remove more than five acres.
And, and, and lots in agricultural district have to be now twenty acres. So more limiting that to fifty percent of that, I don't know, with this worded, for aggregate use. That reduces fifty percent on that, top of that. So you're talking ten acres right there. You've cut in half. So that's why originally I had ten.
Okay.
And I thought, oh, let's go down to five, because then you still have, even the ten wouldn't be feasible because you, like I said, there's a lot, it's a lot more restricted. It sounds like you've got the barriers, you've got the visual, visual buffer, you've got dispensing requirements. So eventually you're gonna have less than, than that anyway. So I thought that was a way of.
Will it have to say that, that, that so many feet of, from the road frontage or whatever is including visual buffers? Or are people gonna read it as, well, we can put it right up to that line and then we put visual buffers?
I considered all that while I was doing it. I thought, leave it to these guys because this is a conditionally, I, you know, this is like a template. Or even though it's a template we got from Ohio Township, it's also, when we further refined it, it's still a template. And I don't think we, I don't know, I don't know if you're looking for an exact, here's the rule, but I mean, because it's still deliberative. And you're still hearing people's case by case basis why they want it. So, uh, I, I don't feel like, not, I don't wanna say the word restrictive, but I don't feel like it should be. As a word may prescriptive.
I could see people pushing the boundaries. If it says, you know, your solar farm can't be, you know, has to be at least a hundred feet. I could see them putting a, you know, here in a hundred fifty feet, they're gonna put their grain upon it. And then, well, we're like, you gotta have, you know, shrubbery and all that too. Well, then that's another ten feet closer to the road.
And is it from the center line of the road?
The right away from what I read.
Which is, which is center line, right?
Uh, it's not always the center line, is it?
More than I know. Think it is in the township.
It was measured from the center line to. Isn't it, did you know that? Was it fifteen feet? Case of one time because that tree, it was, I was hoping it was within the right away that they'd cut down for me. I need to find a space. How the right away.
I just feel like we have to be very specific because people are gonna, they're, they're gonna want to.
Exactly. And where, where does the solar facility start? Does it start at the fence?
Yeah.
In my estimate, that's in estimation, that's where it starts. So, you know, you're talking about the, the vegetation barrier. And from the center line and whatever, that's where I was thinking, a hundred feet, I don't know if that's even enough.
That's what I'm talking, I just, it, it almost needs to be extremely specific, laid out for people.
Have you read that thing about that, that you said about down in Claremont County and Brown County and whatever? I mean, they, they cheated.
Okay.
And, and that's what, that's what I grew by. And I'm like, man, this stuff is like right on top of the record.
Yeah.
I have, that's why I had the part about shall be specified height. At, before, before it's okay with approval. So they.
People need to go inspect that before it was even started to be built.
Those folks down there, those, all the counties, brown county that are, they were kind of ambushed because this legislation on solar. Uh, farms was let loose by the, the Ohio Legislature. Without any real control. They just said, okay, you can do it, right? Now you can put solar farms on anywhere. Well, then there was a huge reaction.
Right.
By the public. So we're at stage two now, which was passed on April sixth, which gives townships. You know, much more authority, counties much more authority, e- even over the siding board. Plants and. And by the way, there's a third leg coming. That's some other point. It's called energy solar. So that's in the works in the legislative. That's, that's the, that's the other.
About the sharing, different people sharing it to.
Like that, yeah. I made a note on is like down in those counties where that, there's, there's all that went on place to, to power Cincinnati. Um, those counties where that happened, they, they can't, that soil is untileable. In other words, drainage for that, because it's topsoil and then it's clay, like you could make pottery out of. And so they literally can't, like around here, we, we tile our fields and it goes from one farm to another and another. You know, it just can run for miles. And, um, they, they don't have tile done. They literally, they literally have tools that they, uh, surface runoff. To, to, to drain parts of the field so that it'll go into the, the, the road ditchway and then finally find its way somewhere. And, and I know this because my, uh, one of my son-in-law's, his family's from down there. And it's, it's tabletop flat. That's why they were so interested in that area down there. And so, you know, and I'm friends with some of the farmers down there and they're like, yeah, no, we can't tile.
That's a good thing you had the experience of seeing that and knowing what's going on there. What, would you suggest, and I, there's a couple of places here. For one thing, I think from what I've heard as far as the, the height of these things, that it's ten, ten feet, maybe eight feet is two. So now I see ten feet, should we say, Eric?
I honestly, you know, I, that's the reason I called Mike, because his is now doing his thing out there. And I said, how tall is your solar panel? He said it was twelve feet tall and forty two feet. So, and you said yours was ten, right? Ten. So, you know, I don't know, I, I want people to be able to do solar in their backyard if they want to. That's great.
Sounds like what you're saying, we may need to do, e- even if we can just do it in here, a couple of sentences. Under residential, we need to, we can, we can, uh. I mean, I think it'd be simple to do. We already have the, we can just make other setbacks for residential. It's a small property, if you think. I'm, I'm trying to think what the conflict is. We said we would better do residential, uh, because of the hundred and fifty feet and all that.
Yeah.
We're still dealing with. Yeah, I, people, first of all, I don't think you're not gonna have too many residential people doing it unless they have some property like.
Well, your, your neighbor's got some property. Yeah, but, you know, his solar panel is probably, I don't know, fifty feet off the road.
Well, he also had that in for a while. We, we settled along that big grandfather.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But what I'm, you know. You have trees around and the shaded areas and whatever. I mean, you know, there, I just think. That, that's why I think there, that this can't really actually apply to some homeowner who wants to. And, you know, it would work for P D S, probably five or more acres, right? It's twenty acres. So, you know, it wasn't a problem.
Yeah.
But you take somebody who has, you know, a two acre parcel, which is what we require minimum of township. And they wanna do solar, these restrictions aren't gonna allow them to do that no matter what, no matter if there's not a tree on their property. I don't know that they would have the place to.
I get what you're saying, because if you got a two acre parcel and you gotta go a hundred and fifty feet from this property line, a hundred and fifty feet from this property line.
What do you have left?
Yeah.
That happens. I mean, that, unfortunately or fortunately, wherever you have properties that don't, that can't conform to whatever regulations there are for certain types of usage.
I guess, I get that, but.
My, my solar panels system is the same as one, uh, it's on the brown run just below K. And you're going up rounder on it's on the left. And their, their solar panels are on the, on their boundary line, not even, I'd say five feet off the line. And there, I say that property is maybe two, three acres.
But, but those people also have the option to do it.
Yeah. That would work. Depends on if your house is in the woods, you know?
Well, I have a question, like, how would it read? Because the mission is to, um, have enough language that. It's clear and have the rules for the BZI, right? So, but it also is their job to also rule on the permits that come in. Because we talked about how there's always exceptions to the rule. So how can there be a, a happy medium in between? So that you're not making it so restrictive that it's nitpicky, but yet. But, but you leave enough room for them to be able to do their job. You know, I mean, as far as like the, because there are exceptions to the rule that a person that has that situation should be able to write the permit and come in. And present their case for the, that's why there's exceptions. Whether, where you're ruling that and you see, oh, this property, they're really trying to just use it for a single residence. So, um. So, so what's the harm in letting them put in their system that they're, they're asking to put in? Because this is an exception, like on your friend's corner property where it, it doesn't meet all of the limitations. So there has to be some, I mean, I think there's a medium.
That's exactly my point. What you're saying is acceptable.
And that's, they, they should be able, yeah. But they should be, I mean, so I don't know, do you have input on that maybe as to how much? Verbiage do you need for it to not be? Um, to relieve you from making all of the decisions, but enough that, but not too restrictive so that, you know. People have their, a, a choice for their, which they have, should have a say in what they're trying to do if it's acceptable.
Well, let me just go back up here because one of the things that we had decided to do at one point. Was to try to make this an addendum so we could get something on the books quickly.
Right.
And so. Anticipated this conversation because I was having the same question as you were. How do we get, I mean, these numbers, I, I've got a fairly good sized lot and I can't squeeze much of this on there. So, but also we can't forget that we, you know, we're, we're all residential people, right? I mean, farmer, but residential, you got a house in there.
Yeah, but your, your land is, is agriculture.
Yeah. My, my point that I'm getting to here is that personally, I don't see anything wrong with somebody like, uh, you know. Business putting solar on their roof or, uh, you know, industrial putting it in their back lot. So, you know, in fact, that might actually be preferable, put it in, into an industrial area.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
Parking park.
Instead of trash in a neighborhood, right? So what, what I'm saying is there's, there's a can of worms underneath the table here. And, uh. So maybe we should consider, I'm just throwing this out. Maybe we should consider just looking at the larger facilities here, that, you know, the small, large facilities.
Yeah.
A- and, and trying to, you know, define those guys. And then later, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get to the, all these other districts and say, okay, with industrial, we don't really care. You know, I'm just, I'm just saying these years, I'm just throwing out examples. Industrial, we don't really care. You can put it anywhere you want because, you know, you're already industrial, you know? Office, you know, you might wanna have a little bit more, just like we do with the resolution in general. We try to tailor each district for its use, right? So I guess what I'm saying is. We, we can't lose sight of the original for. Of getting something, an addendum on the book to stop the big mistake.
We won't stop the big ones. We don't wanna stop the small ones, but we also want, we also want. The, the BZI to be able to, you know, have an easy job of covering the small ones for the whole homeowner.
So. It's possible though, Marvin, the, the, the one, the only way to really do that is to get back into the resolution and change each district. And that's gonna be painful and that's what we're trying to avoid, but there may not be any way to do that. Otherwise, you, you know what I'm saying? This was supposed to be an addendum that took care of everything, but I don't know that we can do that.
Well, that's, but I, I didn't, it wasn't too, I mean, I had the same thing, especially those, dealing with all what ifs. But I wasn't real concerned because I knew it was going back. The only thing I majors did, the major, I thought the major thing I did was take, if you looked at the, the template they gave us in the first place. They said it had all the districts there for permitted use. I just took out the whole section permitted use and said, this is strictly a conditional use. Uh, accessory, conditional accessory use. To me, that says BZI has, has authority to say, yeah, they could even say. Yeah, it doesn't fit. I mean, after all, there are variances. People come to you for variances. So if it says something, if they decide, nah, in this case, that could be a variance. For this particular conditional accessory use, then it, it becomes a variance. So I don't see that being a real problem. I don't think it, does it, does it tie your hands? I don't really feel like it ties your hands. I think it gives you more flexibility to do, to give them a chance for variance if, if they need it. How does that feel? I mean, you're not looking for something, an ironclad ruling or something, right? I mean, because every case you have, isn't it, an individual case where you have to. Look at the merits of that case.
I, I would say from the BZI's point of view, you have someone coming before our board. It's putting in a small solar panel system, right, for the electric, the residents. I would, you know, probably say find it before, it's like putting in a garden or a barn or a storage shed.
Well, and right now, if someone wants to do a residential solar panel at their house, they don't go before the BZI. They just do an accessory use permit. My, my question is, can we just put something in an accessory uses section like we, like a swimming pool? Hey, it's a permitted accessory use, but this is the rules that you have to follow, you know, like pool. It, it's permitted use, but it has to be, you know, not located closer than twenty feet from the water judge to the property line.
Good idea.
I, I mean, that makes it so much easier. So that way, Joe Schmo, who just wants to put in a little, little panel in his backyard.
Right.
Doesn't have to go before the BZI because that's gonna be a pain in the rear.
That makes a whole lot more sense. Can't you limit it to this, where put it to the panels?
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, but I didn't know if that's possible because of the whole make, kilowatt and all that. But that's where I feel like we should go with the, with the residential, the small residential ones. But my question is, where do you draw that line? And that's where, I, I kinda see what he's saying. Like, I mean, this, this one right here, it's residential and it was, what did I say, forty by eleven or something like that, forty four by eleven. And so if it's under five hundred feet, square, square footage.
You know, there's, there's certain regulations for the, I don't know. I have solar panels on my barn. There's certain.
They're on the roof, on the roof. Right now, we don't, right now, we don't require anything for rooftop.
I'm saying that we shouldn't, there's, we have no restriction. They can, they can only do so much.
Yeah, that's the seventy-five percent that I saw. The, the company's claiming they can only do seventy-five percent of the roof for your.
But for the most part, right, right now, I'm gonna get, I like what you did for small solar facilities. I really do. I think that's great. I completely agree with that, but I also see what Marvin is saying as far as small little residential things. I, I think like right now, it's working well. Uh, my, you know, the only issue is, what is it, six feet? It'd be six feet from property line. Maybe we change that. But that was where we can go in and do like we did with pools and hot tubs and all that or whatever and say, you know, E. It's permanent accessory use, but these are your restrictions. It has to be shrubbed. There has to be, you know, like we can say, well, if you're gonna have a pool, you gotta have a pool cover.
Or a fence or whatever.
Like your, your solar panel has to be at least, you know, twenty. Your, your solar panel has to be at least, you know, 20 feet from the neighbor's property line or whatever you decide it is. But I, it should keep, in my opinion, and I'm, it's just fine. Um, we keep the small residential, but we have to find the line.
I didn't realize it didn't go to the B C A, but it went, you just.
No, regular solar panels don't.
Well, then, I mean, I don't, I didn't think, I didn't problem I see at all because I think it'd be very easy with, with some of your, some of your input about what you're seeing the typical case. What's.
And that's why I pulled that one, because I, I just pulled an old one to see, you know, how big is it?
We could add it, we could add a little short paragraph. The only problem is, and I, I mean, that's me, don't do it. We have to go through the whole process of having hearing. And having goes through the, you know, through all the.
And that's where I don't understand what an addendum is, or is.
But the, the, well, with this anyway.
That's, that's gonna be a little different than, it still goes through all the public hearing and all the same process. So what was, why did he say just put it in an addendum?
Cause, cause then we're not changing the table of contents. We're not moving pages around.
It has nothing to do with the number. There might be some kind of cost per something changed we made, whether some kind of consideration.
Not changing definitions.
That's not, it's not a cost back.
So if we do what you're talking about, which is I think a good idea, then we can use this template. With, with the corrections and additions and just move on. And not worry about this. The, the homeowner, things are.
That's like, like Pete said, he saw a guy that it was six feet off the property line. Do we want it? Want, you want your neighbor putting in?
No, that probably should be more.
That's what I'm saying. I think there needs to be some kind of restrictions or some kind of something in here.
Well, we, we have it for like barns and stuff like that also, you know, the, if you're gonna add an auxiliary building. Whatever, that has to be so far off the property line and located at the back and. Pardon? It is six feet.
That's what I'm saying. Do we, do you want?
But that's in resident, that's in agriculture, right? Or is that residential?
It's just accessory use. You know, the following accessories are permitted in ag residential districts. So it's ag and residential and residential office.
If you have a farm. zoning doesn't apply. Your, your zoning.
But it has to be a farm, a working farm.
Right.
That's an ag exemption. Has to meet the ag exemption laws. This is for agricultural, residential and residential op. That doesn't touch your industrial or anything like that.
Well, that's where if, but you have a farm. At certain acreage. Like they just put in any size solar panel.
Well, no, that's why we gotta have the, the restrictions. And that's what I'm saying. I think that there needs to be a, a line. That accessory uses cannot exceed. 600 square footage, you know, or whatever you guys decide it is.
You know, and as long as, I have a sudden impressions and that we had to do, that's a whole different process to do this. It's why we're doing it then. But that doesn't make any difference. And we could, sure, we could add and change the accessory. At the same time. And, and, uh, we have to go through. The trustees.
Well, that, that'll take a year. We've only got a moratorium on solar farms.
It'll take a year.
Sure. Could you change all that stuff? To cha- change all these districts?
Oh, oh, the, all the districts. I thought we're saying, go ahead with this part for the addendum. And then also make a change to the accessory use so it allows these. And just two things we can, you already, this, this guy, we just would do, I think we could do, I could.
Accessory use in residential areas.
Yeah, with just a couple of input from across what's typical, well, I think we can, I could do it in five minutes and we could.
We could do those both at the same time.
Yeah.
Which if we.
That wouldn't be a year, because we're doing this so we could get it with trustees in October anyway, right? That's what we're shooting for. So we could have the other one there too, approved by us and then it's up to them. So I think by the end of the year, they.
What is, what, sorry, I'm the new girl. Still kind of, what is an addendum?
You add it to the end.
So it's just like another chapter.
Add to the end, you don't have to change anything. Don't have to change anything else to the resolution, table of contents or anything.
So we can do, can we do, you know. Small solar or residential solar up to so much square footage. These are, you know, it's permitted use in this district under these conditions. These are the regulations. And then anything over so much square footage. These are the rules.
Are you saying add that to this document? Or are you saying, no, I'm back, like we're saying for accessory section, accessory section. I think, I think it's. It seems, it, at least leave this as small solar facilities and then. Have that section of accessory uses still on, and an actual part of your resolution.
Yeah.
So you have two, you have two places you go to. I mean, it doesn't hurt B C A if they have two different places depending on the situation. Well, this fits, you fit under accessory. Or if someone just looked at that, sees accessory use, they don't have to even bother you. They just know, okay, I can do this because there it is.
And they know they definitely have to, these are the rules they gotta follow. Just like if I'm putting up a, a barn or shed or.
They were talking about the, the low end anyway. In most cases, I think that's what you're up against, which is, I agree that. Hard. I, I even thought at some point, should I just go back and, and change this? Cause they just had, you know, first they had the definitions for all these different types of systems and they had a couple of places where it talked about the districts they're in. And I thought, oh, that's a can of worms, you know, to go in every single one and define it. If it can be a broad. Type of statement, then I think that's, that fits. And if you have to call out like you did for a couple of places. Then, then we do that too. I think, I think that would be ideal. We could put it in the accessory use section.
After you need to decide, you know. Section, whatever. How far do you want it off property lines? How far do, you know, how far from the back of the house does it have to be?
Right. And I think.
Stuff like anything else.
Now, we, right now, we have the barn, you know, auxiliary barn or building need to be behind the house. But something like this, it, it might be all right to have it, you know, beside the house. I even think barns could be beside the house. And that would. That would, that would be easier for the B C A. You know. Side of the house, but, but not in front of the house maybe and, or, and or, and or behind the house. And then, I don't know, 20 feet off the property line. You know, or something like that.
And that's where you guys need to decide those numbers.
Yeah. We need to just plug, plug in what we can all agree on.
Yeah.
But let me just pause here for another second. Um. So it's 20 after, I always promised Shawna, she's got, she's got kids at home. You've got kids at home.
My, my friend's house and my daughter's at her dad's house. I haven't been home yet.
It's a long day.
School's starting.
So, so I'm almost at the end, I'm almost at the end of eight thirty. So we've got, we've got nine minutes. So our next regular meeting is October 3rd. We're gonna be able to get this done or. Could we have another special meeting on two weeks from today? Gone a month of September. So. Two weeks from today is almost.
What can we do by the ninth or 30th?
Perfect, amazing.
So fifteen.
Yeah.
Remind me, I'm also gonna be gone September, so not always, it's got. We're all wrong.
You all go.
He's gonna see my sign.
Where's that at? Oh, no. And where, where are you going?
We're going to Florida, Venice.
Venice, Florida.
No, I remember going east.
Just go back east.
So, so if we're to get anything done between like now and the end of October, I'm, I'm suggesting we'd have a special meeting in two weeks. We don't need the two week notice, by the way, for a special meeting.
That's all.
We could all then. Can play with our numbers again, since we've talked about it in this meeting. And then maybe come up with. An agreeable setbacks.
And what, and what I was, is really look at the pool section. Take that and use it as a template and, you know, article, it's article 38, accessory uses, look at where it's pools. You know, there's so many restrictions on pools. I think that's a good place to start.
It is.
And just see where you want, if you're, if there's numbers you want to change, anything like that. That is my suggestion.
And, and Marvin, I use this analogy with Dan, because I know you'll remember it, Fred will remember it. Dave, I, I don't remember whether you were on the board, but. So, you know, when we were talking about setbacks and landscaping and. Vegetation, that kind of stuff. I, I told Dan, it reminded me of one thing which occupied our time for a long. While and that was travel bits.
Oh, yeah.
And this is another thing, just like a, a solar farm.
Yeah.
It's a big chunk of land.
Yeah.
And, you know, Mr. White over there did a fine job down there on one hundred and twenty-three. Meeting our standard of a berm and you can't even see that.
That's right.
He did a great job.
Yeah, and so did we.
Yeah.
Cause that's what we. Recommend.
Yeah.
And he's, and he, and he stuck to it.
So, so I think we can use that also like pools. Or something as, as a, as a way to look at the solar farms and the, the. The barriers that we need. You know, because the, the, we're gonna have solar farms, that we're gonna have one or the other.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have them here. Well, we have a prepared, we're gonna have this template and nobody's.
Now, now, like I said, I, I really liked what Daniel did. I loved what you did with it. I mean, I really do. I think it'll work fantastically for small solar facilities. But then with Marvin, as far as you can't have the same regulations on. But this is where you guys need to decide, how are we gonna split up the two? Are we gonna go by square footage of the panels or, you know, that's, that's up to you guys.
Okay.
But I think I do, I think we should leave residential as accessory uses and then do a whole section or whatever y'all do on those solar facilities and use what, you know.
Input, though, I, I think, you know, I was, like, as we said about the 500 square, if, if you get some kind of standard. Cause you, you, you're dealing with the real world for us, we're just hypothetical on that, but we're gonna be increasing what we've done. And I mean, we're, again, like I said, we're not sending this as a stone. It's going to go to the B C A anyway. So if we can, if possibly, so if we can set what you think seems to be reasonable.
Why don't I look at. I will look at the last couple of years of ground mounted solar panels that we've done permits for and I'll get the numbers to see what the average.
That'd be great.
Square footage is.
And we have to keep in mind that they can add to them, which, you know, you got the initial request. And then they, they could be added to.
Yeah, Mike's is 500. People like. 500 square feet. Yours, yours, tell me square. Yours is?
Yeah.
There you go.
And they, they, they go by, uh, inverter. So like I have two inverters. So if I was gonna go larger, they would add an inverter. So that would be another 1,200 feet.
And can we do a.
I have a lot of electric, which I have a. Basically. It was sized based on about 20,000 kilowatt hours per year.
And now is it, now would it be easier to do something like that and say, hey, well, it can't take up more than so much percent of your yard. Instead of, this is ginormous. Joe Schmo's over here is only 600 square feet. You know, can we say, all right, well, we, we're gonna take a. You know, your lot size is this much. You can't have more than this percentage of it, you know, 20%, 30%, whatever.
500 feet off the wood. Okay. Uh, so I think we've got our.
Some work I think about.
Homework assignment. Do. Hang on. Do I hear a motion for a, a special meeting on the 29th? This is just me talking. We, you don't do, you know, if you don't feel like you want to do it, but the 29th, uh, which is Tuesday, two weeks from today.
What's that look like on the calendar for the building?
Question, Marvin.
Does mess up with my taco Tuesday night.
Um. We can order takeout. Staying, bringing up the chair. Maybe no stuff, whatever you eat.
I'm just talking about, we, no, we have a group. There's like eight to 12 of us that go out for tacos every Tuesday night. We don't really go to them. So. It's just out there. But that's okay. We can.
So you're okay?
I'm okay with that. All right.
We'll mess up.
We just started at eight o'clock to, to.
Okay, do I hear a motion for a, uh, special meeting in two weeks?
So, move.
I hear a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Is that?
Any opposed?
Is that the 29th?
Yeah.
It is.
I'll just put tacos.
So, 7:00 P M on Tuesday, 29th. Thank you, everybody.
Hello.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Do I, do I hear a motion to adjourn in the 29th meeting?
Oh, Pete wants to know if you want him to attend. Yes.
All approved.
Eight by six P M.
The county is gonna. Say, I'm specific.